Counsel, come to order. Please join me in my pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, would you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Randor Horse.
Here.
Banstruck.
Here.
Carlstone.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Spore.
Here.
All right, for those of you attending via the telephone, you will be able to provide verbal comments during the dedicated public forum and public hearings. I would please ask that you would keep your microphones or telephones on mute until the time at which you want to speak. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
For Banstruck, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstruck.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randor Horse.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. I would like to reappoint Darith Fisher to a second term on the Library Board of Trustees. Darith works at Cranberry Stone Bakery and is a substitute teacher's aide for the Pella Community School District. She has resided in Pella for over fourteen years. Darith has attended twenty-two of the twenty-four meetings held since joining the Library Board in 2020. If approved, Darith's second term will expire on June 30, 2025. Can I get a motion for approval? So moved.
Spore.
Hopkins, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randor Horse.
Yes.
Banstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, we have time for a public forum. Anyone wishing to address counsel regarding agenda items, if you want to do that, please come to the mic, state your name and address, and try to limit comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Spore.
Randor Horse, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horse.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Banstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, a public hearing on the proposal to convey real property to Pella Regional Health Center, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for representation on this item. As Mayor Ward stated, tonight's public hearing is on the proposed property transfer to Pella Regional Health Center. And the property that we're talking about is the old right-of-way that has been previously vacated by the city of Pella. Now, this right-of-way is the red highlighted area up here on the big board, and as you can see, it's just south of Monroe Street, and Pella Regional Health Center is just south of this further source, this red highlighted area right here. Now, the property in total is just shy of forty-six hundred square feet, and the only abiding property owner is Pella Regional Health Center. Now, as we previously stated, the city council did vacate this property on May 17th of this year. Now, as far as the proposed purchase price that we are proposing this evening, it's two thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. It's based off the city's longstanding policy of fifty cents per square foot for former right-of-way. Now, under the terms of the purchase agreement that we are considering this evening, Pella Regional Health Center is also responsible for covering all legal fees associated with this matter as well. So, A, just in summary, the purchase price is based off the city's longstanding formula of fifty cents per square foot, and as well as city policy as far as offering the property to the abiding property owners, and the only abiding property owner in this case is Pella Regional Health Center, Mr. Mayor. So, that concludes the staff presentation. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any written comments, Mandy?
No written comments.
Any comments, counsel?
Just a general question, Mike. Have the east and west property owners been different? Do you divide that in half when you offer it, when you vacate it, or what's the... It's easy now because you have east, west, and south.
That has been mass practice.
Okay.
On sixteen-foot alleys. It's offered eight and eight.
Okay.
Sometimes if one rejects to completely sell it, one property has got the whole sixteen.
Okay.
It's always split, yeah.
Okay.
We do same.
Okay, anything else, counsel? Any oral comment from a member of the audience? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Banstruck, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstruck.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randor Horse.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to the resolution number six four four seven, entitled Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Conveyance of Real Property to Pella Regional Health Center. Sure there's nothing to add, and can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved.
Randor Horse, Banstruck, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horse.
Yes.
Banstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. A public hearing regarding Old City Hall Alley Reconstruction Bids, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, prior to beginning tonight's public hearing sessions on three proposed construction projects that we have, we would just like to address the financing of the proposed projects this evening. Now, it's important to realize that on June 29th, there will be a special council meeting. As a part of that council meeting, we will be holding a work session to talk about our COVID-19 funding that we had received. Now, to date, we do have currently an obligated funds, just over one point five million dollars. Now, the reason why I mention this, as far as tonight's public hearing is concerned, we did have higher-than-expected bid costs for each of our projects that we are considering this evening. But we also want to emphasize in considering this, when you look at each one of these individually, and also its cumulative total that we are considering this evening, we have cost above about four hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars above the engineer's estimate. We believe in each one of these projects that the council chooses to proceed, we do have funding either in existing fund balance or with the COVID relief funding that we have received previously in an obligated funds to cover these cost excesses on these projects. And so, we just wanted to mention that as far as the financing for these projects, as we consider these projects individually. So, let's go ahead, Mandy. The first one we're talking about this evening is the Old City Hall Reconstruction Project. Now, as far as the project that we are considering this evening, when we talk about the Old City Hall, this is the alley that's in back of, most people recognize in the back of the yards, and it's a bakery, and it was the Dollar General store, and the former Happy Joe's building as well. It's the purple highlighted area that we do have up on the big board. Now, specifically, the resolution we are considering this evening would approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, accept bids for the projects, and ultimately awards the reconstruction project as well. Now, we do have a description of the project up here on the big board. Now, it is important to note that what's being proposed for the project is to replace the street inherent, the street component. There'll also be extensive underground utility work that we do have, including new standards, sanitary sewers, storm sewer, and intakes as well. We're going to replace the street portion on there with the Brick Street as well. So, it will be a Brick Street, and this will be very similar to the Mooseport Alleyway Project as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the bid letting was concerned, we did receive two bids on the project. And as you can see, in an effort to entice more bidders, we also gave them extended completion data of the project. But the primary bids that we are considering this evening would be the two bids for the project to be completed this fall. The low bidder on the project was TK Concrete, the amount of five hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. As our engineer noted, guarding and associates, these costs are above about twenty-three percent higher than the engineer's estimate. However, they also feel, due to the current bidding environment, that it's likely that we would not receive lower bids if we did chose to rebid the project. So, with this, and in this particular project, when we look at it, and since it does have extensive underground work, namely the sanitary sewer project, staff is recommending proceeding with the construction contract this evening. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I believe, okay, now here, we've got a little bit more to go. As far as the key dates, if council were to approve this resolution, we would issue a notice to proceed on the project on July 18th of this year. Final completion will be scheduled for November 18th of this year. Now, in summary, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending proceeding with the project and awarding the project to TK Concrete, the amount of five hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. And once again, the project is scheduled to be completed in November of this year. So, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Mandy, any written comments?
No written comments.
Okay, counsel, questions, comments?
It'll be good to get that done.
This is Mark. Would we be better off waiting and bidding this again this winter for a new construction season?
Danny, do you want to answer that question?
I guess, all the engineers we've talked to and many contractors, there is no thought of that happening at this point in time with the supply chain issues. It's just, it's a tough market right now. The fuel costs have a lot to do with the out-of-towners. We've had several of them take out plans, and come bid day, they don't show up, so staying closer at home.
All I can do is walk down that alley once, and you know how bad it needs to be to be done.
And anything with a lot of plastic pipe, which this has, and then our trunks who are coming up, you know, there's petroleum in that process too, so.
Yeah.
It's all about fuel costs right now.
I have a question. Can you go back a slide to the photo down the alley? There's that wooden age structure, it looks like halfway down, I think that's the power line stuff. Does that require, is that going away as part of this project?
I think some of that's already gone.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it in a while, I just know that structure's here.
It's probably old.
I'm pretty certain it's gone already.
Okay.
I know one of those port's been gone for four or five years.
I know there was some sawed-off posts at ground levels. That stuff all going to be redone, I imagine, when they're digging in there.
If it's any near, anywhere near the sixteen-foot, because, you know, we'll be going another five, ten feet, something, picking up stuff.
I thought it'd end up well.
Appreciate you.
This question may be more for Bruce Borche. Have we always called this the Old City Hall Alley from day one, or did we just make up that name?
I can honestly state, ever since we moved City Hall up to our current location, this has been referred to as the Old City Hall and the Old City Hall Alley.
I think we should rename it Westport. Guess not.
There's already a Westport.
That's true. You can't do it without the Southport.
That's probably trade.
Zike, Zikeboard.
Calvin, you're our resident Dutch speaker, you can figure something out.
Anything else, counsel? Any member of the audience have a comment, question about this? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Banstruck, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstruck.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randor Horse.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to the resolution. Resolution number six four four eight, entitled Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, Estimate of Costs, Receiving a Bid and Making Award of Contract for the Old City Hall Alley Reconstruction Project. Nothing bad, I'm sure, Mike?
Correct, sir.
Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Randor Horse, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horse.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Banstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on, public hearing regarding Prairie Street Improvements Bids, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, and once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor Ward stated, with this public hearing, we're talking about discussing the proposed Prairie Street Reconstruction Project. This will be the portion of Prairie Street that's just south of South Street and north of Truman Road. It's throughout the highlighted area that we do have up here on the big board. For those who are in at home, I'm looking at slide number eight. And so, we're looking at this section of Prairie Street, this is currently gravel road. It is important to note, the electric distribution facility is located right over here, along with our new telecom and telecommunications operations plant. A shared electric facility is located over here as well. Now, as far as the proposed improvement is concerned, we're looking at upgrading an existing gravel road that is pictured up on the big board to a suburban cross-section street. That's a fancy word for a regular city concrete street on it as well. So, we do have a description of the proposed improvements. Now, with this project, we did conduct a bid letting on June 14th, we received one bid. That was in the Blommer's Construction, in the amount of nine hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. It was significantly above the engineer's opinion on property cost, which was just over seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Very similar recommendation from the engineer on the project. If council intends to proceed with the project, the engineer is recommending, does not believe anyway that rebidding the project will result in a reduced cost for the project as well. And so, with that, they are recommending accepting the bid, bid as submitted. Now, we are in agreement with the engineer's recommendation on this as well. And if council were to approve this resolution tonight, we would issue a notice to proceed on the project on right around the first of July of this year. Now, the project, as far as the completion, it cannot, the end date would be completion no later than March 1st of next year. So, with final completion, that's the final cleanup of July 31st, 2023. Now, in summary, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval of the resolution and proceeding with the project. And with that, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thanks, Mike. Any written comments?
No written comments.
Counsel?
Just a little bit of correction to that, Mike. The, we give the contractors an option into next year to attract bidders, because we, it was appearing we weren't going to get any bidders. So, we'll delay the notice to proceed at the contractor's wishes to next spring. So, more than likely, with Blommer's, he's booked because he's got a lot of other contracts, this project will probably be built next spring, first thing.
So, with that, Danny, just a correction then, is the notice to proceed will be issued no later than spring, and they'll have until July, I'm sure, to complete the project.
Correct. And more than likely, the way it stands, they're moving along out of Boss Landing, but, you know, he's got Aitken University ahead of him, be added in then, two fiftieths, so. We may get started on some underground work.
Okay, any comments from a member of the audience? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Randor Horse, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horse.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Banstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on to the resolution number six four four nine, entitled Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, Estimate of Costs, Receiving a Bid and Making Award of Contract for the Prairie Street Improvements Project. Sure there's nothing to add, so can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Spore.
Randor Horse, who was that? Hopkins. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horse.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Banstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, public hearing regarding Prairie Ridge West Sanitary Sewer Bids, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item for those who are in at home, I'm on slide number 10 this evening. Now, as far as the Prairie Ridge Sanitary Sewer Project, what this resolution would do, would approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, accept the engineer's estimate of cost, and ultimately defers awarding. It's very important to note, this resolution does defer awarding the contract on the Prairie Ridge West Sanitary Sewer contract. Now, we'll be talking about this further, but we will be considering reconsidering the cost distribution agreement and reconsidering this project. The staff recommendation is on June 29th of this year. Now, as far as the project itself is concerned, it's a construction of a sanitary sewer system, a twelve-inch diameter sanitary sewer line that's just over fifty-one hundred linear feet. And Danny, if you could give just a brief highlight of the geographical area of the project?
Yeah, the upper end of the sewer to your right, basically, right at the white line is where the new Five Field Road line is. And then, to the left side, the beginning of the project, there's a manhole in the north ditch, across from Dinglin's Estates, there in that valley. And that's the beginning of the project. Up on that street, there's a street bank there, so.
All righty, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the bid letting for the project, we held on June 18th, and we did have interest for the project. We received five total bids. The low bidder on the project, J and K, contracting, just over one million and fifty-one thousand dollars. As you can see, the high bid was just shy of one point nine million dollars. Now, the low bid was about eight percent higher than the engineer's estimate of cost, which was just about nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Our engineer, which is V and K Engineering, has informed us that construction costs for a utility project such as this are increasing about three to five percent per month. And as a result, they believe that there won't be any savings if we were to rebid this project as well. So, please keep that in mind as we're considering this project. Now, as far as the notice to proceed in the project itself, if approved by council on June 29th, the notice to proceed would be issued between July 5th and February 1st for this project. It is based off the contractor's schedule. Ultimately, the final completion date for the project would be the spring of next year as well. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the reason for the delay is, we want to make sure that we are in full disclosure as far as what's being proposed as the funding of the project. Now, as counsel does, may recall, in August of last year, we did approve a cost-sharing agreement, RDP Holdings, on this project. And under the agreement, the agreement stated that RDP would be responsible for funding up to nine hundred thousand dollars in project costs. And what the agreement stated, for any costs that would be above nine hundred thousand dollars, the city and RDP would work in good faith to address any cost overruns on the project. This includes not only the construction cost, but as far as engineering, the land acquisitions, and everything on it. So, nine hundred thousand dollars was the budget that we had. And as a result, what we're planning on doing is discussing a proposed cost distribution agreement. We're actually going to be reviewing that during policy and planning tonight. And once we receive direction from council, we'll be able to readdress this issue or take formal action on award of the contract at our June 29th meeting. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Or is that it? Okay, I guess more details to come during policy and planning tonight. But with that, once again, what this simply does is the resolution proves the public hearing accepts the plans and specifications of the engineer's estimate for the contract, but it does not award the contract this evening. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any written comments?
No written comments.
Counsel?
Mandy, could you go back one slide, please? When you talked about the February 1 completion, that was the date all the bidders had too, when they gave their bids as well? Or between May 31, I'm sorry, that last date? So, that their bids were based on knowing that those costs would keep, likely for them, keep increasing to?
Yeah, they, to give us that bid, they were willing to lock in, even though the pipe suppliers were saying there was going to be some kind of big price hike in July. So, once they know they have the project, they don't lock in.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, any comments from any member of the audience concerning this item? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Spore.
Randor Horse, Banstruck, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horse.
Yes.
Banstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, resolution number six four five zero, entitled Resolution Approving Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract, Estimate of Costs, Receiving a Bid and Deferring the Award of Contract for the Prairie Ridge West Sanitary Sewer Project. Probably nothing to add. So, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Spore.
That was Carlstone and Spore, or no, Hopkins. And Spore?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randor Horse.
Yes.
Banstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, special event permit request for the district after dark, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, this particular request comes to us tonight from the Pella Historic Downtown Retail Group. And what they're proposing, as Mayor Ward stated, is a special event permit, or a special event to occur the first Friday of each month from July to October of this year. Now, if approved by the city council, the events would be held from 5:30 PM to 9:00 PM on the first Fridays of each month from July to October. Now, as far as the map is concerned, we do have a schematic overview of the area that they are looking to hold a special event permit request as well. We do have a description of what's being proposed by the, by the event, for the event. So, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. It is important to note that the promoter is also requesting the city hall restrooms remain open and available to the public during these events as well. Now, as far as the closure in the city property, a resolution requesting closure of eight parking spaces is also included with this request. And I believe we had the parking spaces highlighted on the previous slide as far as the map is concerned. Now, in summary, Mr. Mayor, Alford and city departments have reviewed that location. The V and insurance certificate has been received, and city staff is recommending approval this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Randor Horse, Banstruck, any discussion? How many, I missed, how many nights was it? Did it just once?
Four days.
Four?
From July through October, the first Fridays.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randor Horse.
Yes.
Banstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number six four five one, entitled Resolution Temporarily Closing Public Ways or Grounds in Connection with a Special Event Known as the District After Dark. I don't think there's probably anything to add, so can I get a motion for approval? Spore and Hopkins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Spore.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randor Horse.
Yes.
Banstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Special event permit request for 175th Anniver Street, Summer Soree, Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, this particular special event permit request comes to us from the Dutch Fix, and the date of the event is scheduled to be held on is August 5th and August 6th of this year, from 4:00 to 10:00 PM. It is the Quackens Field area that is highlighted up here on the big board as well. Now, as far as the promoter is concerned, during the event, we do have a description of the event. It is important to note that DJ will be playing soft pop classics as well as a part of the event. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, in summary, Alford and city departments have reviewed this request, the V and insurance certificate have been received, and the promoter has also rented the space from the community services office as well. Now, as far as our recommendation is concerned this evening, it's a conditional approval of the request, and it's conditional upon the council approving the temporary outdoor service extension request for the event as well. And that's item F3 on the agenda this evening. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation this evening. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Spore.
Hopkins, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Spore.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Randor Horse.
Yes.
Banstruck.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Banstr?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6452, entitled Resolution Calling a Special Election on the Imposition of Local Option Sales and Services Tax Within the City of Pella, Iowa. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item and I'd like to refer the council's attention to the big board for this. As Mayor Ward stated, what this resolution would do would authorize a special election within our community on September 13th of this year for the imposition of a local option sales and services tax. Now, the current tax was approved by the citizens of Pella in March of 2011 with roughly 85% support. We do have a summary of the projects that were funded with the local option tax. It is important to note a couple items that are included with this resolution this evening is overall, when we looked at the loss revenue over the past 12 years, we estimate it's going to be about $14.6 million. Our current redistribution agreement, we'll talk a little bit about the redistribution agreement in detail, but it's necessary on this for Marion County totaling just about $3.6 million. So as far as total revenues from local option taxes, it's right around $18.2 million. Now, as far as the projects that were funded with this, an easy way to look at it, remember it is about 50% of the projects funded with the local option sales and services tax, restricted projects and property tax relief for the citizens of Pella. The other 50% were dedicated towards quality of life projects. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the proposed new tax is concerned, what's being proposed is the new tax, it started on July, January 1st, excuse me, of 2024. It would be for a term of 20 years. Now, as far as the categories that we have listed up here on the board, it is important to note that we did discuss these with the city council on June 7th. They're the exact same categories that we discussed back on June 7th. But some of the highlighted ones that we have here would be indoor recreational facilities as well as community center facilities, any other recreational type facilities, infrastructure improvements. If you recall, the previous tax, about 50% of the proceeds were dedicated towards infrastructure and property tax relief as well. And then we do have a clause for any other lawful purpose approved by the city council as well. So with this, Mr. Mayor, actually, if we can go, Mandy, let's hold on right there. Okay, I get a little ahead of myself. Now, it is important to note, Mandy, if we can go to the previous slide, and I apologize for jumping the gun on this, if you were to read the details of this resolution, it does have a clause in there that the city council reserves the right to rescind this resolution if a redistribution agreement of Marion County is not approved. And that's very, very important. If you recall, during the previous 12 years, we received roughly $3.6 million from Marion County, those local option sales and services tax. And I would say one of the reasons in explaining why that's necessary, Mandy, if we can go ahead, please, is when you consider the local option sales and services tax, right now we receive roughly 8% of Marion County's collections. The reason why we receive 8% of the collections is Pella generates roughly 60% of the local option sales and services taxes. But how that's distributed from the state of Iowa is we have to share with everybody else in Marion County. And how it's distributed in Marion County is 75% is based on your population and 25% is based off property evaluations between the year of 1984 to 1986. Don't ask me why that is in place. And that leans to disparity between the folks that generate the tax in Marion County, which is the city of Pella and the city of Knoxville, and the other entities as well. And so with that, if you were to look just from what we received from the tag, from the state, from the state, we received about 28% of the funds, even though we generate 60% of the total tax in Marion County. And it's for these reasons why we've had a redistribution agreement with Marion County since 2007. So once again, what this resolution allows the city council to do is if we do not, are not unable to negotiate a successful redistribution agreement, we can rescind the resolution if we choose to do so. So please keep that in mind, that's an important clause that is in this resolution this evening. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, in summary, Mr. Mayor, the proposed uses for the new tax, we talked about on June 7th, the two highlighted ones would be the indoor recreation center as well as improvements to our community center facilities as well, will have been the two big projects we've been spending quite a bit of time talking about as well. But in summary, we are recommending approval of this resolution, which would authorize a special election in our community on September 13th of this year for an imposition of a local option sales and services tax for a new 20-year term. So with that, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
You kind of skipped over the supervisors approving.
Okay. Yep, no, I was remiss. It is important to note that the Marion County Board of Supervisors did approve a resolution support that did authorize the tax. And the reason why that was necessary is in order to call for an election in our community. You have to have over 50% of the population or governing bodies of 50% of the population in your county supporting the effort. The Marion County Supervisors did approve this and were supportive of the election and they approved that on their June 14th meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Banstr, Hopkins, discussion?
Just to say a comment for those that didn't know, Dawn and I went to that June 14th meeting and Mike did a fabulous job laying the case and also really telling the impact that Pella has in this county. And when you look at all the projects in slide after slide after slide, it becomes a bit overwhelming, but it was nice for me as a council member just to see that myself.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstr?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6453, entitled Resolution Adopting Annual Wage Scale. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board and for those who are on at home, I'm on slide number 22 this evening. And what this resolution would do would amend the city's wage scale and it's the same proposal that we did discuss on June 7th during policy and planning. And specifically, what is being proposed is a 3.2% increase for all employees excluding those that are covered by the executive pay plan. So those would be the city's department heads and the minimum wage employees for the city as well. Now, as far as the actual index change, as the mayor council may recall, the proposal, and this is my policy, the city's cost of living or the actual wage increase is actually tied to an index. It's the employment cost index, published by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. The latest index that we had was based in March of 2020, for March of 2022, and the percentage increase over the 12 months was 3.2%. It is important to note that the proposed increase that we are considering this evening is more than what we had budgeted for the city's budget for this next fiscal year, which was at 2.5%. And this amounts to an additional increase of just about over $50,000. Now, in looking at this, we do believe that between the funds that we have dedicated in contingency for next year as well as fund balance, that we could cover this cost overrun with it. And as a result, staff is recommending approval of this resolution this evening. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Brandon Horst, Hopkins, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Banstr?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6453, entitled Resolution Adopting Annual Wage Scale. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board and for those who are on at home, I'm on slide number 22 this evening. And what this resolution would do would amend the city's wage scale and it's the same proposal that we did discuss on June 7th during policy and planning. And specifically, what is being proposed is a 3.2% increase for all employees excluding those that are covered by the executive pay plan. So those would be the city's department heads and the minimum wage employees for the city as well. Now, as far as the actual index change, as the mayor council may recall, the proposal, and this is my policy, the city's cost of living or the actual wage increase is actually tied to an index. It's the employment cost index, published by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. The latest index that we had was based in March of 2020, for March of 2022, and the percentage increase over the 12 months was 3.2%. It is important to note that the proposed increase that we are considering this evening is more than what we had budgeted for the city's budget for this next fiscal year, which was at 2.5%. And this amounts to an additional increase of just about over $50,000. Now, in looking at this, we do believe that between the funds that we have dedicated in contingency for next year as well as fund balance, that we could cover this cost overrun with it. And as a result, staff is recommending approval of this resolution this evening. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Brandon Horst, Hopkins, discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Banstr?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6454, entitled Resolution Adopting Health Plan Premiums. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor Ward stated, what this resolution would do would adopt the health city's healthcare premiums, and this would be for fiscal year 22, 23. So this would be the fiscal year that would start on July 1st, 2022, and extend through June 30th, 2023. It is the same increase or same proposal that we did discuss on June 7th of this year. You know, with this specifically, what is being proposed with this resolution is a 10% increase in health insurance costs for the city of Pella. We do have the details listed up on here on the big board as what it would mean for the typical employee as well as the city of Pella. Overall, the city of Pella covers 90% of the health insurance premium cost. City employees are responsible for 10%. And with that, Mr. Mayor, city staff is recommending approval of the resolution this evening.
Thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Brandon Horst, Spore, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Banstr?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6455, entitled Resolution Adopting Reserve Police Officer Compensation Rate. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, and as Mayor Ward stated, what this resolution would do is establish a compensation rate for the city's reserve police officers that we have. It is important to note that we did discuss this proposal during our June 7th policy and planning meeting, but currently, in explaining this issue or whether the reserve officers are active, largely volunteer, and they're currently paid a dollar per year by the city of Pella. Now, we're proposing to compensate our officers $25 an hour, and those events would largely be paid by the events, the reserve officers attend to. And as you can see, these are some of the items that reserve police officers typically cover for the city of Pella. So these costs will be passed on to the event organizers that utilize the reserve officers. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, fiscal year, for this current year, we are estimating that the reserve officers are going to contribute to the city of Pella roughly 288 hours. We expect in future years, it's going to be roughly similar for our officers. So they do a yeoman's level of work and a lot of work for the city of Pella on it as well. Now, as far as the proposed budget that we have, or we believe as far as revenues are concerned, that revenues from events are total of about $3,300 for the city of Pella. We do have itemized up on the big board our expenses for the reserve program, which are just over $7,800, which leaves a net subsidy of roughly about $4,500 for this. So with that, Mr. Mayor, and I believe that is that all we have for this item? Okay. Well, we do have pictures of our three reserve police officers. Once again, they contribute a significant amount of time to the city of Pella. And what this resolution would do would increase their compensation from a dollar an hour up to $25 an hour. And it would be retroactive back to April 1st of this year as well. And with that, Mr. Mayor, this concludes our presentation this evening. Be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Hopkins, Spore, discussion?
Mike, you just a little bit ago said a dollar an hour. It was a dollar a year.
A dollar a year, that's correct. I stand corrected.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Banstr?
Yes.
Motion passed. Abstract of Bill Number 2105, can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Brandon Horst, Hopkins, any discussion, questions? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Counsel, any council member have any other business needs to be addressed this evening? Any members of the public have any other business that needs to be addressed? If so, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address, try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Nina Fisher, 1546 Park Drive. I'm sure you have all heard that the sports page has permanently closed, correct?
I haven't.
You haven't heard that? Okay. I'm going to assume that it's not just somebody saying it, because when I called, they said that they were closed. With that in mind, I was wondering, who actually decides what and when in the time period as to putting up new places to eat or sports parks or any of that? Who decides that?
Well, private industry decides if they want to. Like, if you're talking about a new restaurant or something like that?
Right.
Anybody is welcome to come to Pella and open a restaurant. So that's their decision, yeah.
Okay.
If you're talking about sports parks, like the one we're discussing, that would be a city-initiated facility.
Okay. So these places, like say the ones that are going out to eat?
Yeah.
If they decide they want to come to Pella. Do we have some sort of a consultant that comes in and tells us whether there's enough people to work at a place like this before we allow them to do this?
Well, I don't know that allow them is the correct word.
Okay.
If people want to come and open a restaurant, it's up to them to decide whether it's going to be a profitable. I mean, that's totally private business, so we have nothing to do with that.
You guys have nothing to do with that?
I mean, obviously, we would have, they have to be in a zone, in a place, zone approved for that particular use. But that's totally private, private business to decide where they want to go and when.
Okay. So the reason I ask is because it appears that we're going to be getting a Chick-fil-A, and I'm not saying that this is good or bad. But what I'm also seeing is we have a lot of small businesses around Pella that are suffering because they don't have enough employees. And my concern is the fact that when we have other people, other companies building, whether it's a place to eat, sports park, whatever it may be, what does that do to the community when we're robbing Peter to pay Paul? And I speak of employees. So that's a huge concern that we're having here in Pella. And I only know this because I go to a lot of places and I talk to a lot of folks. So I don't know if there's anything that you guys can do, but something needs to be done, because we're not taking care of our people, our small businesses. So that's all I have to say about that. So thank you for listening. council packages as well. So with that, Alyssa, go ahead, please. Mandy? Now, one of the core functions of these agreements, or core, I'd say, conditions of the agreements is the Pella Community Ambulance will be required to transfer all tangible and intangible property, cash, anything they have, any type of asset they have to the City of Pella. That's the intent of these agreements. Now, as it applies to the cash and investment accounts that the ambulance currently has, those assets will be used to pay off all their existing obligations and liabilities. And at this time, staff believes that their current cash and investment accounts will cover all their obligations and liabilities before being transferred over to the City of Pella with that. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And I believe, as far as the agreements in the highlights of these two legal documents that we have right here as well, again, just keep in mind that their existing cash and investments accounts will be used to pay off all their existing obligations and liability before they're transferred over to the City of Pella. The funds that will be remained after everything's been paid off will be transferred to the City of Pella. Now, with that, as far as the items that we have here, too, in addition to the cash and investments accounts, we'll be looking at all equipment, all personal property and tangible property will be transferred to the city as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. So when you look at these two agreements, please keep in mind, as far as those included, as far as draft agreements, we are still working on the schedules to make sure we capture all the assets of the Pella Community Ambulance. The agreements that we will be considering on June 29th also have all the schedules attached with them as well. So once again, just to keep things simple, in taking over the ambulance operations, one of our conditions lists that all assets of the Pella Community Ambulance need to be transferred to the City of Pella. The nonprofit agency that's currently operating the ambulance will be dissolving. As a part of the dissolution plans, they will be transferring all the assets over to the City of Pella. These two legal documents will be both approved by the nonprofit agency's board, as well as the city council. That completes the formal, that will at that time complete the formal mechanism that will transfer all the assets to the city. And so with this, really, the intent of this session is just to address any questions the council may have on these two legal documents before we present them to the council for formal consideration on June 29th. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we're looking to answer any questions or address any concerns the council may have with these two proposed agreements.
Okay. Mandy, can you go back one slide? Just as I was reading that, item one there says all debts obligate, except those assumed by the city. What, what potentially is there, what could be assumed? Because you're saying that there's enough assets to take care of all liabilities that currently exist. So is that just a caveat, or?
That's a caveat, yeah.
There's nothing that you know we're going to assume?
No. And, Mr. Mayor, it looks to us that they do have adequate assets, cash and investments, to pay off all their obligations, what we're aware of. With it, if you were to go through these agreements, there's, I would say, a lot of legal definitions and a lot of legal terms in the agreements on there. Now, as far as the obligations, I think the intent is, is under those situations where you have assets and the assets aren't necessarily enough to pay off all the obligations before they're transferred on to the other entity. That allows the provision to have separate debts and obligations assumed by the parties that's assuming the assets. We don't believe that that clause would apply in our case. But you'll notice, and I'm forgetting which schedules or sections are on there, but there's also sections marked in these schedules that we'll be considering that'll save the liabilities, except those that are assumed by the City of Pella. And to date, there will be no additional liabilities assumed by the City of Pella. We are projecting that all outstanding obligations by the time that the nonprofit dissolves, blinds down, there will be resources left over in their cash and investment account that will be transferred over to the City of Pella.
What's going to be the effective date of the transfer?
It's midnight on June 30th, so technically it's July 1st.
Okay. So that, none of those assets will go on our June 30 financial report?
That's correct.
And then that, we're still, I'm just, you know, July 1 is a critical date, if I remember right.
Yes.
That ground medical, I can remember it's ground emerg, G E M T or G M E T. You've got to help me out.
G E M T.
G E M T. I just worry a little bit that some bureaucrat in Department of Health and Services in Washington DC are going to say you're too late. But we're sure that if we do that midnight date, we've met all those thresholds.
That's, that's our understanding.
Okay. Okay, anything else? We'll be voting on these on our 29th special meeting. All right. Moving on to the proposed amendment to the South Coast extension.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, and this is in regards to the cost distribution agreement that was previously approved by the city council in August of 2021. It's for the Prairie Ridge West Sanitary Sewer Project. We do have a map up on the big board of the project that Denny highlighted, and then we gave over to the project when we considered the construction contract for the project. Now, it's important to note, when we talk about this project and the cost distribution agreement, as, as what's being proposed this evening, we'd like to remind council that the truck line that you see up on the big board, it was a version of this, was, that was also included in the city's long-term sanitary sewer plans. And that was adopted by the city council in the early 2000s for the project as well. So as we consider this item and potentially contributing financially to the project, it's important to note that this project has always been talked about in some version or some form, including all the way back to the early 2000s, when we considered part of our long-term sanitary sewer plans as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, at the time, last August, when we were estimating the cost of this project, when we looked at the proposed construction cost, engineering, land acquisition for the project, all in, we thought the costs were somewhere right around $866,000. And as the council was aware, we've seen significant increases in construction costs since that time. But with that, what we knew at the time, we estimated the cost of the project at 866. The current agreement that we have with RDP required RDP to pay all costs up to $900,000. The agreement stated that in the event the costs were in excess of $900,000, the parties would work in good faith to address any cost overruns. Now, as far as the current estimate that we have for the project, we believe it's going to be right around $1,210,000. And we do have an itemized breakdown of the construction of the project itself. The construction bid that we considered this evening will have formal consideration on June 29th of this year, which is just over $1,051,000. Engineering for the project is just over $105,000. Easements, when we get off-site or off RDP property, total just over $25,000. And we throw in an extra amount for contingency and also miscellaneous legal fees that we may incur in the future for the project, right around $27,000. It puts us with a nice round estimate of $1,210,000. Now, with that, if you look at the current agreements, $900,000, so our estimated project costs are going to be $1,210,000. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. What RDP is proposing is to share any project cost above $900,000 equally with the City of Pella. Now, if you were to look at this project, you would look at this, and that would mean that the city would be contributing $155,000 to this project, which is approximately 14% of the total project cost. When we look at the project and you consider the portion of the project that is off the RDP site or off-site, it's about 45%. So the portion of the project that is not on RDP property is almost half the project on it. What RDP is proposing for anything above $900,000, that those costs would be split equally with the City of Pella, based off the latest estimate, we mean, we believe that means about $155,000 would be our share for this project. Now, with that, Mr. Mayor, it is important to note that we will be formally considering the cost distribution agreement on June 29th. And before formal consideration, though, either the cost distribution agreement or the proposed construction contract, we wanted to make sure we addressed any questions council may have before we formally vote, or before they presented the council for a formal consideration on June 29th of this year. So with that, that concludes our presentation, and we'd be more than happy to answer the questions the mayor council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Comments, questions?
So initially, the estimated cost for the whole project was 866?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And then, at that point, the agreement required RDP to cover costs up to 900?
Correct.
So this is actually above and beyond what they had agreed to originally?
That is correct.
Yeah.
The original construction estimate was 777. And a couple months ago, we had Bob revise that and it moved to 977, to jump 200,000, six, seven months.
Yep.
And then that's now been over, low over a million?
Yeah, then another 80,000.
So I had two comments. So I remember when we first talked about this, probably two years ago, maybe. I remember Bruce Ebaugh, who had been on the council for a long time, when we talked about getting this paid for. I remember him saying, finally, we're going to get that, get some use out of that sewer we have out there. So I think this is a project that's been thought about for a long time. And so our cost as a city in this whole project's 155,000. If you recall the first slide, before we started talking about projects, the COVID relief money that we received, I think it allocated 150,000 to this project, depending on, you know, who you want to believe. COVID is one of the causes of the increase in cost on all these projects. So it seems that would be a very appropriate use of some of those funds. Then, in essence, it's not costing us anything to get this project, which opens up a whole lot more territory for Pella, too. So.
The fifth bullet point up there, the non-RDP portion, is 45%. Is that up there because it's not in their development, is that what that is?
Yeah. If you were to look at the project, and a good way to look at this is how much of this project is on RDP property?
Yeah.
Roughly 45% of this project is off-site or off, off the RDP property. So from the developer's standpoint, they look at roughly 55% of the project cost is on their site. And what they're proposing is to pay for 86% of the project.
And we're getting that additional land for coverage for 14% is the point of that bullet?
Yes.
Sounds like a good use of our funds.
Yeah. Thank you. Anybody object to this agreement? All right. Okay, we'll vote, we going to vote on this on the 29th also?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And last is our public access restroom agreement with PACE.
Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor Ward stated, what we have this evening is a draft agreement with the PACE Alliance to provide additional public restroom options in the central business district. If you recall, we discussed this earlier this spring at a policy and planning session. We were presenting a proposal from the PACE Alliance to provide additional public restrooms. Now, as far as the key agreements, or key, major highlights, or major, major components of the agreement, the term of the agreement that we would be considering would actually expire on December 31st of this year. So it's almost, it's a good way to look at this, would be a pilot program. Now, actually, if council were to proceed on this, we're proposing to have a formal vote, I believe, on July 5th of this year on it, in the program. A project would actually, additional public restrooms would start on July 6th of this year. Now, as far as the agreement is concerned, the council would have approval, any private restrooms that would be proposed by the PACE Alliance. To date, PACE Alliance's only proposed location would be at the Dutch Fix, which is located at 621 Franklin Street. Now, under the requirements of the program, the restrooms would be required to be open at the Dutch Fix from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, six days a week. We do have the holiday exceptions that they would be required, that they would not be required to open on those dates as well. And the city, in exchange for this, the city would pay $600 per month for the Dutch Fix to have the restrooms available to the public. So once again, what we're really striving to do with this agreement is to make available any type of additional public restroom options that are located in cities downtown, in our central business district. Now, as far as the terms of the agreement is concerned, the city would remove any liability associated with operating this program. So the PACE Alliance would be responsible for the oversight of the program. They would be also responsible for any liability associated with the program as well. And before presenting this for an official vote or formal consideration on July 1st, or July 5th, excuse me, we're looking for feedback from the council on the proposed contract. And so I do believe we have Ms. Karen Eishen in attendance, as well as Mr. Bob Zaustra on this item as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we're looking for input, questions, and build answers, and seeking, we'd like input from the city council on the proposed agreement.
I was wondering if Karen or Bob could just give what the business community is lucky to know, and how eager or not eager they were for this when you approached folks. Go ahead.
You can jump in if you need to. I'm not exactly sure if I'm going to answer your question, so if I don't, let me know. Restrooms have been a long, 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 long-term problem. This absolutely will not solve the public restrooms, but it's an attempt to utilize some existing resources we currently have. Really, when we talk with the owners of businesses downtown, they really just want to be able to point somebody in the right direction. And sometimes, City Hall or the voice department is just too far. So we're trying to find locations that are centrally located, yet also really meet some extended hours beyond just the normal five o'clock timeframe. So that's why we have visited with Dutch Fix, we're visiting with a couple, or at least one other. But right now, they are ready to go. But I think the store owners would be very happy to say your restroom is just a quarter, a quarter of a block, or half a block, whichever, just down the way. I think that's going to answer some of the question. Obviously, lots of public restrooms available, as you see in other cities, would probably be the full answer. But this is at least an option that they can do.
I think the only additional perspective, I mean, if this works, I mean, a pilot program is a good way to describe it. But if it works, it gives you at least a possibility you could have maybe a half a dozen of them scattered around the town. So all of a sudden, you don't have to go way over here or way over there. As you can imagine, whether she's got a little two-year-old, he's got to go, you know? And it just, it's just a practical problem. And if we could have a sort of a distributed thing, it has, it does have a natural advantage compared to a consolidated, a central location. I think what we've talked about, maybe the city opening up the library, and maybe City Hall has an example, additional ones, that whole area of getting a distributed network, I think, could be a really good thing for downtown. And the business owners desperately want a solution. They do. And a lot of them would participate, but they're not handicapped accessible. And really, they didn't build their facility with that in mind, and making it public restaurants. They're mostly just employees, and they're stuck in the back end closet somewhere. So I think if this works, you could also envision some, some of them would see some good motivation to update their own restroom, would be participate in the program.
So is there a process, going to be a process in place to, and I don't know how you would do this, decide whether it works or not? Is Jason going to take a head count on it every day and see, see what the numbers are?
I think, you know, a measure of that will be if the property owner feels it's successful, if it was manageable, if they were utilized in a way that they felt helped the public, you know, just conversations with downtown business owners, just seeing what the reaction is from customers. I'm not down there every day face-to-face with the customers. They are, so they're going to be resource. And you guys, you know, once you hear on the street, I think that'll be a great indicator as well. Do we have metrics that so many people need to use it every day? No.
You could do a toilet tissue count. Toilet tissue, if you agree. I think it's great.
Will there actually be an agreement between Dutch Fix and PACE, or just a verbal, or?
No, there will be a contract.
Okay. And then the con, here at the city would have the contract with PACE.
Correct.
Okay.
Because we need to remove ourselves from some liability as well.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I think it's a good idea to try it.
There are certainly other possibilities out there. If they become more real, then we'll become, we'll talk about those, too, to see what, see what they fit in with this.
Did I answer your question?
Yep, very good. Appreciate the overview. Okay, move forward. I'm hearing, get the agreement ready, approve that on the 29th also.
I think that one was scheduled on July 5th.
All right. Okay, that completes our agenda items for our policy and planning. We are going to go into closed session. Don't think there will be anything come out of that closed session, so if no one wants to hang around, we can vacate and we can have our closed session here.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak a minute?
Sure.
I'm hearing there's 3% to 5% increase on bids per month. What's this going to look like for our sports park, $65 million project? Do you expect, how much more do you expect that?
Well, I think it's in our discussions and some of our numbers, we had escalated the cost, but we won't know until we get there.
Can you give me that ballpark figure?
Well, for instance, when we put, we put $30,000, $30 million in as a, as a minimum. That was based on a facility that had been built in Marion last year, and that was a cost of $22 million. So we added $8 million to the cost in our estimate of, to get a facility like that, yes.
That's over, that's over 30%?
Yeah, that's, that's 30, over 30% cost estimate, yes.
So I'd, I'd heard some numbers, $65 million, and just 5% of that's another 3, correct?
Yeah.
So we're talking 70?
Well, we'll find out. Hopefully, we're going to be bidding the project in January. That'll go for sure. And our engineer, I'm sure our engineers will, you know, are on top of that, too, to assess this along the way.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah. Next session for simple file approach, chapter 21, 29, discuss the condition of employees not covered by collective bargaining agreements. Miranda Horst, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Brander Horst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
He really did jump out. DeAnstra?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed in session. Now, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve resolution number 6456 entitled, Resolution Amending Infectious Disease Action Plan slash Policy Related to the COVID-19 Public Health Crisis. Support? Hopkins, Spore, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brander Horst?
Yes.
DeAnstra?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.